My name is Scott Malloy. I was a Ripta bus driver from 1973 to 1984. I went back to school, got a PhD, spent 30 years here at URI, teaching labor relations and the history of mass transit in the state. That's why I'm here tonight, just to say a couple of words. In that time period, I've written dozens of books, articles, and op-ed pieces in the Providence Journal talking about the history of transit, but also what's wrong with the operations of it going back 50 years, sometimes all the way back to 1864. But I have to say, in all the times that I was critical to management, this is not the case today. This is a political crisis brought on by political non-leaders. Do you see any meetings being held around the state saying, "Shut the place down"? I haven't seen one. I haven't seen a letter to the editor, but I've seen meetings all over this state with people like you who want to stick up and keep this going. And that's what we need to do. As I mentioned, the history goes back to 1864. Omnibuses, horse cars, electric streetcars, buses, trackless trolleys, diesel buses, you name it, a cavalcade of vehicles. And now it's gonna come to an end. Now it's gonna come to an end. This is death on the installment plan. And it's a short installment plan indeed. We've all been asked to come and witness the public execution of public mass transportation in the state of Rhode Island. We've been asked to help bury the corpse. We're gonna do the autopsy. Unless we find a way out of this mess. That's why I wouldn't even tackle one route situation here. Wouldn't make any difference. But here's what would make a difference. Your legislators, whether we like it or not, don't get much communications about anything. Call them up, email them, grab them at the supermarket. Get in their ear. A couple of communications will make the difference, especially with all the meetings we've been having and the attendant publicity. You've gotta get to them. And what the answer is, is an emergency political session of the General Assembly now! To come up with the money, authorize it, and save mass transit. What kind of a state of moderate-sized, like Rhode Island, can say, "Oh, we're open for business, but bring your car, because you won't get from here to there"? I thought that was only in May. So let me end by saying, we need to stand up now. And as I've studied this over the years, I can't think of but three or four examples where routes have been cut, where they've ever been resurrected. They're not coming back, folks. They won't come back. Service frequency in the '40s and '50s and '60s and '70s. Broad Street had such frequent bus service, they didn't put out timetables, because there was always a bus there every five minutes. They even wanna cut that. So none of these things will reappear. There'll be no magic resurrection. It'll all go down the drain. And the first thing I do when I get home is to contact my state senator and my state rep. If we all do that, they'll have an emergency session and save it. If we're quiet, if we're timid, if we're afraid of the powers that be, then kiss Ripta goodbye.
Thank you for this opportunity to voice our opinions. So the Ripta 60... I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. The Ripta 69 bus route is critical lifeline for many of our students, especially our international student population. I work at URI for the Office of International Students and Scholars, and we support the overall well-being of our international population. Losing the route would be devastating. It serves as one of the primary means for students without cars to access essential services such as grocery stores, where are they going to buy food? Pharmacies and off-campus housing. It also plays a significant role in our recruitment and retention efforts. We're planning on recruiting more international students, but where are they going to live? And what is their life going to be like here without transportation? The availability of reliable transportation is a key factor for prospective international students when deciding where to study, and removing this option would create an additional barrier for those already navigating a new country and culture. Our students rely on this route, not just for convenience, but for basic access and quality of life. Thank you again.
I think that with all the cuts being made, I'm open to, and I'd like to hear if anyone else is open to the fair, being raised, it's well worth it. I'm devastated right now hearing all this. And so I wrote, "People, young and old, disabled, elderly, ride the bus to get to and from work, to get food, at stores and pantries, for appointments, church, airport, events, medical and non-medical appointments, and visit family and friends, and get to high school and college. Classes and many various reasons, they take the bus regularly. The option experience we're so grateful for is mostly satisfactory or above satisfactory, as the bus is usually reliable, and most of the drivers are very nice and friendly. And in the past decade, I have felt safer on the bus, as well as the safety of the people on the bus than in the past decade. However, the pros and cons are profound, that I am attending the meeting to discuss them, and I feel the voice of many people, and mostly share their worries and concerns. The bus is the only option for transportation for most of us who ride the bus, because we don't have a vehicle. I want to add, in the same breath, I cannot stress enough that Uber and Lyft in the South County, and I'm speaking mostly about the 1466 and 69 in South County, it's so needed, because Uber and Lyft is neither reliable, affordable, punctual, and is actually much more expensive in South County for reasons why I'm not sure, but because of those reasons, it's just not an option for most. Passengers with children also cannot ride Uber or Lyft, because those companies do not allow car seats. And it's also a very pricey alternative most cannot afford regularly. The Flex Bus is excellent if you get lucky enough to get an appointment and have a specified time. The Flex Bus is frequently booked out, and the Flex On Demand in South Kingston is... It also doesn't run the weekends, and people need dependable transportation. I really think that the Ripta schedule should not be made in terms of weekdays and weekends, rather a daily same schedule, ensuring the early bus, an early bus, and a late bus. I hope the decision is based on people and not the thought that South County is a vacation spot, or sleepy near Aragansett, or something like that, because there's so many people that rely on the bus during the day. Yes, every hour, every other hour is good, but if it's a matter of having the bus at all, an early and late bus would be better than no routes at all. I can't stress enough how the 1466 and 69 is needed in South County, more not less, earlier and later, and equally in Aragansett as to Newport, and not different or later on the weekends. Also, you can't walk across the bridges. Newport or Jamestown, you can't walk across the bridges. Some of the buses could connect better, but you're way ahead of me. I just think that, you know, I could take the Block Island ferry and go down to the ocean, but that's not the answer.
Hey, everyone. I represent the international student community at URI. We earn grad student salaries, which is just enough to survive, but not enough to afford a car. The URI subsidized housing on 2900 Kingston Road is a lifeline, but it's gonna be demolished next year. So people are gonna move away from this place, most probably to Wakefield, Aragansett, and other places. So as I see, 64 and 69 is gonna get removed altogether. So it's gonna isolate the international students from the more southern part of Rhode Island. Now, these lifelines are gonna get cut on top of high-rent inflation, low-frequency public transport, and it's gonna make things really worse for international students. And I already have second thoughts about if I want to continue my studies here or not, because it's getting really difficult. And Rhode Island can expect some decline in student movement from CCIRI to URI and everywhere else. So these are the students who do exceptional research, and these are the same students that brought URI as the number-one university, public university in New England, and put Rhode Island on the map of USA for Quality Education. Now, I guess Rhode Island is going to be known for cutting the lifelines of these students, the people who love this place so much. It's so beautiful. From the looks of it, reducing the frequency might look like the only option right now, but I don't think eliminating the routes is a good idea. So it's gonna isolate Rhode Island from the southern part, and Galilee, you're gonna not be able to go to Block Island from here. This means no buses to the closest beach for the South Kingston residents and many more people.
Hi, I was a student at URI for two years, and then I commuted to Pawtucket for three years following that. I'm a commuter, and I live in southern Wakefield right now. And I have a very old car, and there were multiple periods where for multiple months at a time, my car broke down and I had no option to get to school or to work without using the 69 line. You know, there are a lot of people in this situation. It's not just me. I'm in one of the better situations. I have a lifeline. I can live at home if I need to, you know. If I have a doctor's appointment, I can get a ride from my parents. Whereas some of the international students here, you know, they don't have that option at all. They're thousands of miles away from home. You know, if something happens, they're out of doctor's appointments, they're out of pharmacies, they're out of groceries, all sorts of stuff, you know, that they literally need to live. Not only is it international students that are facing this issue, it's also a massive lower-income population in Rhode Island. And, you know, being such a melting pot in the state, right? You know, there are a lot of international folks that aren't just students and aren't even eligible for driver's license, you know, let alone being out of a car or not being able to afford one. So for those people, you know, having a bus line that goes through their area to pharmacies, groceries, doctors' offices, all that, you know, is an absolute must. Yeah, so, you know, on top of that, that falls on top of the gentrification that's already happening in the state, especially within the city areas. You know, lower-income communities are already, you know, about as far away, or as far away as people can get them from, you know, these resources and from job opportunities. And, you know, whether the people that are in power and in higher-income classes want to admit it or not, they rely on these people in lower-income settings to provide critical services for them, you know. So even if they want to be selfish in making legislation, the selfish thing for them to do is to provide transport and life services for these people. Another thing I'd like to touch on is that for CCIRI, the state wants to offer two free years of education right now to the younger generation as a way to boost the job market, but taking away their means of transportation, they're literally just cuts against that. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a URI student, so this is kind of personal for me, specifically because I work at Navstate or Newark. And I know a lot of veterans who now not be able to get to their job anymore, and they're like military veterans, which I feel like is very concerning, specifically. I also just wanted to mention that, because I feel like that just feels like an insult personally, because denying critical services to veterans who live here and just want to go to the job to literally defend the country, because you want to let... It feels just like wrong. I don't know, that just feels wrong to me. Also, for the URI, I have a lot of friends who rely on the 69 route to get to URI. And if that is like lowered, they're not gonna be able to get here on time for classes. They're not gonna... I don't personally take the bus, but all of my friends, all of these other people I know, they do. They need the bus just to get here. A lot of them live in Providence. And without that, they're just... They're not gonna be able to go to, like, I don't know, what if there's an exam on exam week? How are they gonna actually take the exam? Because the bus is always only gonna come every little hour or so. So they're gonna have to wait, or they're gonna be late. There's no in-between. I also feel like URI is already extremely isolated. We're far away from both population centers, Newport and Providence, and affecting both those routes would just kind of devastate just the population of URI in general. If anyone wants to go to Newport, they can't. They'll have to take an Uber. If you want to go to Providence, you're gonna have to wait every hour, diminishing any students going to Providence, or contributing to any work over there, including in Newport. And also, I just feel like that compared to all the other schools in New England, UMass and UConn, URI stands out, but it won't anymore. Because I simply chose this school because of the public transportation. I chose this because I thought that was like, this is great. There's a bus straight to Providence, a bus straight to Newport, and just all these places. But that was one of the main reasons I chose to be here. So if there's a lot of other students in my place, they're not gonna choose to go to URI anymore. They're gonna choose to go to UMass, they're gonna choose to go to UConn. And then what's the point of being the number-one public school in New England if all the students are not gonna come? I only have classes where students are... I know prospective students who are considering going here because of those reasons, and they're just not going to anymore, because compared to UMass, where you have buses, trains, you don't have taxis, if you have Ubers, but there's all this going to change. Even in UConn, you also have kind of buses. But it just is so many other places. And also, as someone who isn't... I'm not from... I'm from New York, so I moved here. I know what happens when bus routes get canceled. They absolutely don't come back. Like that gentleman said, they are gone forever. I lived in a place where, when I was a kid, there was buses everywhere, and now the only way to transport is by car and highways. And it basically destroyed most of our economy there. In the town I live in, we used to have a bustling shopping center, and no one goes there anymore, because no one can get there. So that's it, I guess.
I'm wearing two hats today. I am on the Hopkinton Town Council, and I also am a member of Kingston Congregational Church across the street, and I'm lobbying for URI students, teachers, and workers who use the bus. So number one, I'm saying, please do not eliminate routes Flex 301 and 95X, which is the park-and-ride. They are the only routes available in Hopkinton. Please do not eliminate weekend-holiday service for Route Flex 203, and do not eliminate Saturday service for Route 64. The URI students need them. And finally, please do not reduce Routes 64 and Route 66. The URI students need them. And I thank you for your understanding.
Hello. My name is Anastasia Ennamura, and I live in Exeter. And without Route 69, my family will lose completely access to essential care and community. I'm a mother of three young children. They're here with me, as you have noticed. And without this bus route, our doctors, pediatricians, and most of our daily activities, like storytime in libraries, my kids' classes at South County YMCA, meetings with our friends, grocery shopping, all in Wakefield and Aragansett will be completely cut. Also, 69 is the only way we get to South County Hospital. Switching to another doctor, let's say in Providence, is extremely difficult. I'm pretty sure everyone will agree that finding a doctor office that accepts new patients is like extremely difficult in Rhode Island. And if we don't have that bus, I don't know what I'm gonna do. And having three young kids going to doctors is like every-week activity. So yeah, I'm asking not to cancel that bus. Also, right-chair or carpooling is not an option. It's not realistic. You say, "Take Uber," but I have three car seats and a stroller. Not every car will fit that. And Uber drivers, sometimes I question safety of that. I can't take over with kids. And I'm not even mentioning the prices of that kind of service. Get a car? I'm a foreigner. Getting all the paperwork, getting all the licensing from me, it will take at least three years and extreme amount of money. I don't... I can't afford that. My family can't afford that. So for me and my family, the bus is not a backup plan. It's our only option to get around. Especially Bus 69 is the only route that goes south. There's no alternative. Like, I can go Providence, and in Providence, there would be multiple bus routes to get somewhere. Go to Naragansett, go to Galilee, go to Wakefield. It's 69. It's the only option. So what I'm asking is a smart solution, not a full cut of the bus. I understand the need to adjust routes. I understand, but eliminating Route 69 entirely would isolate families like mine. I hope Ripta will consider creative scheduling options. Maybe reduce frequency during low-use hours instead of removing this route altogether. We need services that feed real needs, not one fit serves all. So please keep the route. Maybe make it shorter. Maybe make bus stops go like to the most important places, like medical facilities, or groceries shops, or schools, community centers. This way, families like mine can still reach important places. And I could consider a Flex or dial a ride option. If regular service is not possible every day, please keep 203 Flex. That would at least cover that area. Thank you very much for your attention.
Hi, I'm here speaking on behalf of my son. He's 30, he has autism, and he lives in this community. We chose this community because it was safe for people with autism. He does not drive. Driving is a very complex executive-functioning task. And so the Flex Bus has given him independence and access to services in the community without relying on mom and dad. And any of you who remember what you were like as a teenager, you did not want to be seen with your parents, well, that is what my 30-year-old son says. Do not, mom, please, not mom. So while the Flex Bus may seem like a luxury, and cutting services on the weekends and the holidays is not that big a deal, it is a big deal for people who are on the autism spectrum and who cannot drive or do not have access to a car, because they can actually get to Thundermist for urgent care. How can they get there for an urgent care visit? Because Thundermist is open on the weekend. How can they get to CVS to get medication? How can they get to the grocery store? And then beyond the critical daily living, there's also just being part of the community. Many of the people who aren't part of the disabled adult community don't realize... They don't all just grow up and live in group homes, because the state cut group homes extensively over the decades. Okay? You have to qualify, and there are very limited beds. And so there's been phenomenal supports offered, if you're lucky enough, to get people who may have been in residential services in the community. We need services like buses and the Flex Bus so that they can live in the community. It costs far less for everyone, and it has a far higher quality of life for the people who do have autism. So I would ask that we consider that. I'd also like to note that many of our adults with disabilities work in retail settings. Retail settings are not Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. Retail settings are open in the evenings, they're open on the weekends. So if you are fortunate enough to have a job at Marshalls in Aragansett, a Flex Bus getting there on Saturday can be your job lifeline. And lastly, I will share that South County is a lovely community. There's a lot of wealth in South County, and there's a lot of poverty. And there are a lot of people who are struggling to make ends meet. There are also a lot of elderly people. And those elderly people rely on public transportation. When the senior bus was not working last year because the senior bus driver in his 70s retired, there were many, many, many weeks into months where some seniors were relying on the Flex Bus to get to the grocery store. And, you know, that is a critical need in our community. So I would ask the state and the government to please consider the impact on these people in that community. Thank you.
I'm also a URI student, but unlike me being at the Kingston campus, I work and study at the Bay Campus. And there's only one bus that takes you from... That essentially goes to the Bay Campus, and that is Route 64. The availability of Bus 64 across times, across many times during the day, has given me convenience to attend classes, has given me convenience to take part in the Bay Campus community. Reduction of that, or cancellation of such frequencies, will, one, hinder my ability to go to my workplace; B, I cannot take any classes there, so I need to do a whole lot of mental math on just to, you know, come up with new strategies to do that; and C, it will not... The supposed times that will remain after these changes supposedly may not work with my schedule. So that's a whole entire problem altogether. But as it stands, it's working out really great for me for the past three years, and I really hope it continues to stay the same.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jacob Green. I live up in Providence. I want to thank you, sir, for coming and making the presentation. I know it can't be easy. You work at Ripta, and I've saw kind of the paint on your face as you're talking about these things, because it's gotta be as big of a hit to us as it is to the workers at Ripta as well. So I commend you for always coming up and sharing it with us. I've written line 1454, 5766, 69R, 1636 to get to soccer games. Ripta has legitimately been my lifeblood, not only as a student here at the university, as a researcher here at the university, but also as a resident of Rhode Island. Although I'm a transplant from California, don't shoot me, right? And really, I've seen mothers, I've seen students, I've seen families. I've seen tons of people take the bus and participate, not only in getting from A to B, but actually have real conversations with the people in their community about how their day is going. And that also includes our drivers, who do a fantastic job of keeping us going and getting to our jobs and doing the things we need to do every single day. 66 to the 57 connection will sometimes, even at this point, take me two hours to get home. That means four hours a day that I'm spending on a bus, although I like to read, right? Of where I'm not engaging with my partner, I'm not engaging with my family, I'm disconnected from the things that I need to do. That has impacted my health in ways foreseen and unseen, right? And a further reduction to these services will further continue to erode the types of time that people need to spend with their families and to spend focusing on their jobs and their communities here in Rhode Island, of which we all are important parts of. I want to tell you a quick story. I also attended KCC when I was here, and my mentor, Enrico Garzilli, unfortunately had a stroke and was at the South County Hospital. And the bus was the only thing that could give me to point A to point B, to see him in his bed, and to actually communicate to him how much he meant to me and how much he meant to this community. The bus is more than just a way to transport us from point A to point B. It's part of the lifeblood of Rhode Islanders. And by reducing these services, you're siphoning off some of the lifeblood of these communities, and you're going to starve them, leaving people that come and come in vacation here in our lovely state at a much larger advantage than the people that are poor and the people that are struggling and fighting to keep their place here at a much worse position than we are here. I saw on the presentation that we said this was a revenue issue. And I'll agree with the first gentleman. I don't think that this is a revenue issue. This is a will issue. This is a will by the Board of Directors not to fight for the people who take Ripta, to take it to the Assembly, and to put forward proposals that are gonna meet the needs that we need here for our bus services to serve our communities here in Rhode Island. So I want to thank you all very much for being here today and fighting for Ripta, and I want you to keep on doing that, like this gentleman said. Contact your senators, contact your reps, and continue to make a lot of noise, because we'll need it. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Elle Hartshorn, and I am a recent graduate from the University of Rhode Island, and I was the undergraduate representative for disability access on campus. I'm here to bring attention to the elimination of Route 69 to Naragansett to Galilee and its effect on college and low-income communities. According to Ripta Title VI Service Change, the elimination of Route 69 will have no impact on low and minority communities. They say that there is not gonna be an effect on low-income communities by eliminating this route. However, I can assure you... And you can actually put this in on your phone, too. I triple-checked it like a billion times. This route, Route 69, directly brings you to a homeless shelter and a food pantry. And by eliminating this route, you are actively going to create more barriers for these people who are homeless and trying to actively get to these locations. Saying this won't have any effect on these types of demographics seems to neglect the people who are homeless and those who are actively trying to get food at the food pantry. Bus 14 is the closest you can get to that little location. That would be a 45-minute walk to those locations, which is not accessible, particularly for those with disabilities and parents with young children, as we heard from earlier. Not all these streets are gonna be up to code and accessible for those with mobility aids. Again... Again, I'm going to say you are cutting off the only relatively accessible route that is bringing people to a food pantry or shelter. These people, one being myself, who uses this food pantry. And those people who already are homeless and also are going to the food pantry are literally the definition of low-income demographic. And by saying it won't have an effect on these demographics ignores their hardships. Where, like, my question is, is where is this information coming from? Where are these people making these decisions? Because it's not actually representative of the population that you're trying to assist. I'm going to say it again, disabled and homeless and low-income people are not disposable. Additionally, as a university student, eliminating the 69 route will prevent hundreds of students that travel from Narragansett, Galilee, and parts of Wakefield to the university. Many students like myself have relied on the 69 bus to get to and from school. And by eliminating it, you are going to be disrupting people's schedules. They're going to have to ask themselves, can I actually financially be at this university anymore? How am I actually going to get here? Because a lot of the time, you actually can't pay for like the other services that are like Uber and whatnot. Lastly, Ripta Title VI Service Changes says that if Ripta is able to secure funding prior to implementation, these services changes may be avoided. If there is any funding that is found before this actually goes into effect, I urge you to reinstate Route 69.
I'd first like to comment on the times for these meetings, which are ludicrous, if you ask me, 12:00 PM on a weekday or 5:00 PM on a weekday. Take an early bus just to get here. But it speaks directly to accessibility and what we're all here for. And you know, I ride the 65X to Providence every day. But I drove here. I'll be fine with these route closures. But I'm here to speak for people who won't be fine, for everyone who relies on the bus every day to get to work, to get to school, to get to appointments, get wherever they want. Because the community health of our state is directly correlated to people's access to community, to the beach, to wherever they want to go. You should be able to get there. So I strongly oppose any elimination or cut to these essential routes.
My name is Sue, and I live in Wakefield. And for 23 years, I've utilized Ripta 65X service route, previously 66, every day to get to and from work from Wakefield to Providence. The 65X and service Route 69 has been a blessing to me and my community on multiple levels. I vividly recall that prior to 2015, this express bus had a high volume of riders, and many have since retired. Then came the pandemic and forever altered the workforce dynamic with work-from-home programs. Many don't have work-from-home programs, myself included. I work on the Brown University campus and provided a bus pass by Brown, which they highly encourage as campus parking is a nightmare. As we know, parking overall in Providence is limited and very expensive. Brown is also supporting the Green Initiative to keep less cars off the road. While I'm aware that statistics don't lie, I implore you and I beg you not to eliminate the 65X or service Route 69. Would it be possible to negotiate one 65X service route in the morning and one at night, keeping the 6:35 AM? In doing so, the 6:35 AM services, anyone needing to be on time to work in Providence and relieving unwanted havoc and increased costs. As a suggestion, maybe the evening route back to South County could be 5:00 PM. Or could your trolley bus be utilized in this case to ease your costs? Myself and others are willing to pay more to ride the 65X to and from Providence to alleviate Ripta costs. With regard to service Route 69, on more than one occasion, I've observed the 69 bus in the evening with zero riders. Our community, and don't bite my head off, doesn't seem to have a need for 12 hours of runs back and forth from URI to Galilee. However, I speak for many low-income residents who truly, truly rely on the 69 just to get into town during business hours. I also speak for the URI students who are not here to defend themselves, who also utilize the 69. Many do not have cars on campus. And generally, South County rolls up the sidewalks at like 6:00. Is there a real need to run the 69 for four hours every evening? I don't know. But it's vital for business hours. Could the 69 run during business hours only? I don't know. It's just, I'm just throwing it out there. I ask Ripta to continue to evaluate each community. Not all communities require the current Ripta schedules. And some need more runs. But please, 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 don't penalize the rider who truly, truly appreciates and needs this wonderful service by eliminating said bus routes. Thank you for your consideration.
My name is Kelsey Sawyer. I live in Wakefield. And so many have done a wonderful job explaining how important Ripta is to our community. So I'll just speak to my individual experience. So I have two small kids, and riding Ripta to work every day, or every day or when I need to go to Providence, has really just been a lifeline for us. It's allowed us to reduce to one car. So my husband can stay home with our small kids. And so if Roots 66, 69, 65X, if those went away, I don't know what we would do. And that has ripple effects into our community as well. Because we have someone at home, we can participate in our community more broadly. We can check on neighbors, we can help our parents, we can do events at school. So it's just, I think having public transportation options really just is the lifeblood of an active and vibrant community, which I think we all deserve to live in. Thank you.
My name is Heidi Travers. I'm just, I want to speak broadly. The cutting off of South County, it's unfortunate that the political funding has put us in a position where it's us against them, which population deserves a bus more? All populations deserve a bus, and that's a community. People have spoken to that. Actually, the cutting off of South County was worse than I thought. I didn't realize the 14 bus was going to terminate in North Kingstown, which pretty much eliminates, as people have said, people's ability to get to the grocery store. The only services to the Kingston campus of URI and apparently two buses on the 64. So having said that, I am a frequent 65X bus rider. Very distressed that this pipeline to Providence is being eliminated. And as other speakers have said, I mean, I personally am privileged. I can drive to work, so I have an option, but not happy about it. And like I said, putting one population against another, putting one part of the state against the other. Again, I understand the difficult position that Ripta was put into. I think I heard on one of the slides about needing a 20% reduction in service. I'm hearing a much, you know, statewide averaging out. I'm hearing a much larger reduction in service in South County. And as previous speakers have mentioned, South County is not at all a tourist-rich area. There are populations, and I'm going to step outside. There are a lot of populations that rely on this bus to get to the grocery store and the doctor's appointments. And people have spoken way better and way more personally about that. Last, I just want to say, and again, once you lose the riders, you're not going to get them back. And once you cut off, when you have a community of riders of all different social economic standpoints, you have hopefully a political force of all across. You have a statewide resource. And you are going to lose that because statewide, you know, you're really, you're losing a lot. You're losing South County, you're losing the park and rides. What's going to be left? And again, it won't come back. I would urge everyone, and I include myself in this, contact your legislator. Contact the state leadership in the House and the Senate. And also, you know, I have to say, my final thing is personally, look at fare increases. I know that that's not going to close the complete gap. But the fare has not increased. I've been taking the bus since 2006. I think it increased once in that 20-year time period. And I want to say that was probably 2008-ish or about that time. Anyway, thank you very much.
I'm Nancy DePietro. I'm going to speak again, as one of my fellow bus riders in the morning spoke, to a personal experience. I'm new to the whole system. I started working in Providence last year. I'm a 31-year veteran with, you know, US Department of Labor, public servant, have pushed off retirement three times. Love my job, but commute from one of the farthest corners down in Charlestown all the way up to Providence every day. And let me just explain that, you know, I look at your brochure. Not you, the face of the company or the state. I look at the brochure, and you can eliminate the entire section where you tell on green your commute. You're going to be putting so, I'm speaking specifically about a 65X. All of your Xs, all of your commuter buses, the ones that are most efficient, the ones that have the least amount of stops, the ones that get the taxpayers to work so we can pay the taxes to fund the state, to have a public transit system, now have no way to go to work, pay your taxes, to get these programs for all the people who need these programs. It's, you tell on the website, it's a first-class transit system essential for driving and economic development of the state. How can you say that? How can you say it's a first-class public transit system when you're eliminating it? You're a Providence transit system, basically. And you're not looking for economic development. Not if you're taking the college students who are going to be the next workers or the people who do commute, and you're not allowing us to get to work. There's no way I'm going to drive an hour and a half. It's taxing on my body. It's taxing on the car. It's taxing on the environment. I just came from Route 4 in Providence. It's amazing what the traffic was like. Add some more cars to that. Add all of your commuters to that. It's absolutely amazing that the Narragansett, Newport, Westerly, all of your 9X, 12X, 59X, 61X, 65X, 95X. Those are the routes that get the people to work, to drive the economy, to get the state to be the first-class state it can be. Take all that away, and we're not going to have that thriving economy. This is a step backwards. I don't know how you can think that this is a step forward in public transportation. It doesn't make sense. And then I'm going to say, engage the stakeholders. How are the stakeholders engaged? I work in the government. I work at 380 Westminster. We were all just pulled off of telework. All the government employees were called back to work a couple of months ago. There's a stakeholder. Hundreds of employees just came back to work. I saw no brochures. I saw no posters. I saw no outreach. Nobody contacted my agency. Nobody came to that building to say, hey, we stop at Westminster and Empire at your door. Nobody came to say that to the federal employees. You could have gotten hundreds more people interested in this. All of those electronic things on the highways, oh, the zeppelins. No, 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 no. Forget the zeppelins. You should be saying, you're sitting in traffic. Wouldn't you rather be in an air-conditioned bus right now? But I don't see any of those billboards. I don't see the outreach. I don't see the stakeholder engagement. I'm blessed. I got to meet a couple of people that now I get, three, four people here today that I commute with every day. And so I just don't understand how this is in the name of, okay, I'm going to talk, I'm old. I keep pushing off my retirement. I'm going to talk about another demographic. I'm old. Name of equity. I keep seeing the word equity. I see the word all over. Well, most of the people on our bus, except for you guys maybe, are over 40. When you look at EEOC, and I know that's a government agency for employment, the standard for age discrimination is 40 or above. So you're taking those who are middle class, the older groups, the ones that are still working, the ones who have mortgages, the ones who have kids, the ones who are paying the taxes, who need to get to work, to get the economy to go, the old folks. And you're taking away our livelihood. It's critical for us to get to work. And so I'm sitting here going, this is a step backwards. And then I thought about it, going, why are we here? I'm sorry, this is government mismanagement. If since 2010 you have not had a rate hike, I'm not promoting rate hikes. But do you know if you've got all those hundreds of federal employees in that building to ride your buses, it's subsidized? Why didn't you go after that money? They'll pay for our commutes. The government pays for the government employees to take public transportation. You just missed out on that entire source of income that could have funded all of this. And since 2010, this is like a business. You have not raised your rates. Everything else in the world's gone up, and you haven't raised the rates. So this is government mismanagement. I'm sorry, this is political and government mismanagement. So I'm just speaking from my own personal experience as an older writer who loves my job, who's a public servant, who needs to get to work. And all of your Xs, you basically have just cut off the state. Because as I was looking at the map, it's, I can't, I don't know, my Indian name's Pascog? It's the northern west corner and Westerly in Charlestown? It's the Ocean State. And all of South County, you just cut us all off from the capital. And it's shameful. I'm sorry. It's just shameful that we're at a point where, yes, scheduling. We all take the rides, and I had to drive here and leave work early because none of the buses would have gotten any of us here at 12:00. And we wouldn't have gotten here until 5:30, 6 o'clock. So the scheduling during, hmm, the last week of July, Ocean State. We're all on vacation with one month's notice. I had two days, and I wrote this up, one month's notice. And you're trying to just squeeze this in? But this all started July 1st, and it affected the budget? Why wasn't anybody figuring out all these problems earlier? That's mismanagement. I'm sorry. But thank you.